I call the annual, excuse me, the special town meeting to order. The fire chief has asked that I point out the fire exits, which are located on either side of the stage and up at the back at the end of each aisle. If you haven't done so already, please silence your cellphones. Please all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it is, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The officer's return of this meeting warrant shows that it was properly served and posted. Okay, the moderators' rules are posted in the handbook. Nothing has changed on them, so I'm going to try to skip over some of them because they haven't changed. A couple of points I just want to make. Anyone wishing to speak on any issue must first proceed to the microphone and be recognized by the moderator. Moderator will not entertain any speaking out of turn. You must use a microphone unless otherwise permitted. You will be asked to state your name and address every time you are given permission to speak. You may also be asked if you are speaking as a resident or on behalf of a board or Any amendments to the main motion must be submitted to me in writing. Anyone unruly or disorderly will be given a warning and advised that they are out of order. If the situation continues, they will be escorted out of the meeting and in a place convenient, excuse me, in a convenient place until the meeting is adjourned. If the moderator is not certain of a voice vote or a vote declared by the moderator is immediately questioned by seven or more standing or and/or recognized by the moderator, will proceed to a hand count. Otherwise, general parliamentary procedure and common courtesy rule the meeting. Okay, a couple more housekeeping issues. What I need are hand counters, please, before we can get the meeting started. I'm looking for two hand counters for this section. I need two for the middle and I need two for the far left in the event that we do have a hand count. Okay, don't everybody jump up at once? Come on up, sure, there's two. Come on up. One, two. How about the middle? I need two from the middle, we can't get started. There's two. Come on up. Okay. What we'll do is we'll just do two for the entire. Okay. Disregard, we're going to do just two for the entire left, right, and center. I'll handle the stage and everything else. a simple yes, and if you're opposed, it's no. Okay? Non-registered voters, we'll just point them out over here to my left, basically your right. There is a section for them as well, if they wouldn't mind just, if you don't get the announcement, non-registered voters will sit over there. Okay, let's start with some introductions. We can start down here on the floor. I don't care which way you start. We've had a bunch of changes with regards to the boards. So just simply your name and who you are. My name is Derek Hall, and I am the moderator. Go ahead.
Deborah Wilder, Advisory Committee.
Michael Curry, Advisory Committee.
Jeffrey Bennett, Advisory Committee.
Amy Guthrie, Advisory Committee.
Cameron Fortes, Vice Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
John Capus, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Diane Haley-Brooks, Selectwoman.
Carter Tarzanini, the Town Administrator.
Kelly Pomprion, Town Accountant.
Carol Harris, Town Clerk.
Article 1.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Cameron Fortes, Vice Chairman of the Tumbler and Board of Selectmen. I move to authorize the payment of late bills from prior fiscal years from the FY19 budget of the following departments in the following amounts. Sewer Department: $1,795.97. Cable Department: $110.40. Highway Department: $220.80.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
John Capus, I second that.
Thank you. Advisory Committee.
Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Thank you. Further discussion? I will note that this one has to pass by a nine-tenths vote. All in favor of Article 1 signify by saying yes.
Yes!
Opposed?
No!
It passed at 7:09 PM by nine-tenths.
Mr. Moderator, Article 2, John Capus, Board of Selectmen. I move to an act section LV142 to the Town's General Bylaws to an act entitled Stretch Energy Code for Purpose of Regulatory Regulating and Design of Contractors of Buildings for the Efforts Using Energy. To read as followed. The Stretch Energy Code as codified by the Massachusetts Board Building Regulations, the standard as 780 CMR 115 Alpha/Alpha includes any future conditions, amendments, or modifications thereto shall be requirements of the insurance of any building code for both new construction and existing building of the residential and commercial nature. Buildings not included in this scope shall comply with 780 CMR 13.00, 34.00, 61.00, or 93.00 as applicable. This bylaw shall take effect on July 1st of 2019.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Cameron Fortes, Vice Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, I second.
Thank you. Advisory Committee.
Advisory Committee recommends for this article.
Thank you. Further discussion?
My name is Steve Drury, Drury Lane.
Thank you.
I oppose this bylaw for the several reasons. First of all, the bylaw is stating that a building permit will not be issued, and it is including residential and commercial is actually exempt in most cases. And the other situation is, is that this increases the cost of building in general. And having just got this book today, I noticed that if you were in your home and you wanted to repair a couple of windows and maybe take a wall out, you would have to provide a HEERS test, H-E-R-S. This test is, you know, could raise, I don't know, if it's $200 or $300, $400, but almost everything you do has to be kind of complied with this energy situation. And it's also an Energy Star situation, whereas appliances, it goes off onto appliances and situations like that, which gets into smart meters and the rest of that. And I totally would oppose this question. First of all, we do have this law, the code itself, all right? But to imply a bylaw is basically stating that no building permits would come out. Now, that means that the building inspector would have to be pretty much enforcing some of this stuff. And it's been my experience down at Drury Lane and watching several buildings in the last several years be built without permits in general, and properties that the building inspector, under the zoning officer situations, are not enforcing it at all. And this property right here is one of them. That's on the other side, has an illegal address. And so now you want me to vote, you know, to bring in this energy situation? And if you can't afford the, you know, the test and so forth, and to bring these things up to code, then you can't do it. And I think that's restriction of liberty. So as far as I'm concerned, this bylaw is not needed, and we shouldn't be enforcing this throughout town. We should let the state enforce it. And the bottom line is, is that these people want to get a grant. Now, my question to the board is that, is this grant payable back, or is this just free money they're going to give you once you, at the price of everybody else having to comply with this, you get a free grant so that you can build? So I don't care who answers that, your town buildings, but you're supposed to, apparently if you're a green situation, you get a grant, $150,000. And I was wondering what you're going to do with that money and also what it applies, you know, what are you going to apply it to?
Okay, thank you. Somebody can answer that question?
Mr. Moderator, Diane Haley-Brooks, Selectwoman.
Thank you.
This Stretch Energy Code does not apply to existing property. It applies to new construction only. So it would not apply, yes, Mr. Drury, it applies to new construction only. So it would not apply to, I'm not sure, we just had a presentation given to us directly by the people who do the Stretch Energy Code. So it applies. As far as the monies are concerned, it is money that is available to all towns, and it is not having to be repaid.
May I comment to that, please?
One second. Was that it?
Those were his two questions, I believe.
Yep, that's fine, okay. Mr. Drury, further? Go ahead. Go ahead. You can follow.
Just to state what's up there in plain English, it says existing buildings of a residential and commercial nature. So that would be the buildings of these home people that have homes. These are existing buildings, not new residential buildings existing. And even the code that you put in here actually speaks to a couple of windows and a wall being removed and have it to go through the energy code. So I appreciate your thought. My next, as I said, could you answer the question, what you're going to do with the grant money?
New construction additions.
It says the town building inspector, under the Reverend Sections of the Building Code for both new construction and existing buildings of a residential and commercial nature. That says to me that residential and commercial, that's existing homes.
Mr. Moderator?
One second. One second. Unless you can answer what he's, Diane?
So the question that was asked was what would we be doing with the money?
Well, this is the second question. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that would go towards anything that would have to do with being, any of the buildings that would have to have lead lighting, energy-efficient heating, energy-efficient cooling, energy-efficient windows, anything like that. Anything to do with energy efficiency.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're very welcome.
Once, I got you. One second. Cameron, was there something further with?
Yeah, I was going to just answer that second question that he had about the wording up there.
Okay, it appears that he's all set.
Okay.
So thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, would it be possible?
Who are you?
Diana Morrison, 270 Gray Road.
Yes, you are. Thank you. Go ahead.
Would it be possible for Mr. Jim Perry to speak to this question?
Jim Perry.
Would it be possible for Mr. Jim Perry to speak to this question and answer some of your questions?
To answer your question, yes. Who is Jim Perry? Right, what I'm saying is, what relevance does he have in this? That's all I'm looking for. Absolutely.
Thank you.
If you're an expert, sir, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Jim Berry. I work for the Department of Energy Resources, the Green Communities Division. Ten years ago, I was a member of the Board of Selectmen in Belcher Town, learning about the Green Communities program because we needed the money. And I learned enough about it where they said, well, why don't you go out and help other people understand it? So be careful what you volunteer for. With regards to the language here, your warrant article is suggesting that you adopt CMR 115AA, which pertains to new construction and existing construction, but the actual language of 115AA has two sections for it. One is for new building and one is for existing buildings. And it's only the new buildings that are impacted by the Stretch Code. This code says, this section of the code says, read this paper for all building, whether it's new or old, residential or commercial. But this paper also then has two sections for new residential construction, new commercial construction versus existing residential and existing commercial. And it's only the new stuff that has new requirements on it that are more energy efficient than the standard building code. I hope that explains the discrepancy in the language.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Whoops. Kate Fulton, 79 Bridge Street. I believe this question has been answered, but I'm wondering, does this require that lead engineering or an engineer be required on all new buildings? And the cost, of course, it does mention the extensive cost, and if that is what you're referring to when you say that this would make things more expensive?
Sure, if you can answer that, that's fine. Go ahead.
Yes, Jim Berry again. Thank you. I forgot the first part, the first part of the first question, sorry. I should have been taking notes.
Well, I'm wondering if on new buildings, if lead engineering or engineers would be required, and that's what you're referring to when you mentioned that the expense of building a new structure would be, well, not this.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah.
So I was here, and I think I spent an hour explaining this in great detail, which I don't intend to do tonight unless you'd like me to, which I did, I didn't think so.
Thank you.
So the short story is, what's the difference between a brand-new home being built in a Stretch Code community versus a brand-new home being built in a non-Stretch Code community? I think that's a simple way to put the question. In a non-Stretch Code community, you have to have, the building code has an electrical subcontractor involved, a plumbing subcontractor involved, a heating subcontractor involved. In a Stretch Code community, you have those same subcontractors involved, plus one more subcontractor who's an energy expert, it's called a home energy rating services expert, HERS. These people have been around for a number of years because they also do Energy Star for Home programs to provide for, they can define how energy efficient your home is, and based on how energy efficient it is, you get more and more money from the federal government for making it more and more energy efficient. So the state adopted that process that was used for Energy Star Homes as part of the Stretch Code process. So yes, you would have to hire a person to be involved in making sure that the new construction of a new home is energy efficient. It does cost a little bit more to hire that person. There is a Mass Save New Construction Program, just like there's a Mass Save Program to help you with your own home, your existing homes, I hope you're taking advantage of it. There's also a program that pays for new construction, based again on how energy efficient it is. So the more energy efficient it is, the more money they reimburse you for. There's also been cost-benefit analysis that have been required by the governor that we had to provide and present and publish that shows that the additional cost for this home energy rating services expert were not completely offset by the rebate, is more than offset by the first year's costs of savings. So you're saving oil, or you're saving propane, or you're saving electricity because the house is more energy efficient, and the whole thing pays for itself in a matter of two or three years, and then year after year after year beyond that, those savings go right in your pocket. I hope I didn't take too long on that answer.
Thank you very much. Further discussion?
Yes, Dr. Drury. I'd like to say one thing about, he's not a voter, and so every time he speaks, he should have permission to speak, not.
He does. He did.
Because I'm here as a voter. Second of all, I have nothing against what he had said, but he did say something very important, and what we're voting on there is different language. That's what he pointed out. He's correct. That's different language. That language basically would state that all of the things that are said in there, the existing building in residential and commercial nature, would have to have, be, you know, through this process, and the building permit would therefore have to be issued. And, you know, the building inspector, I have issues with him because he doesn't enforce anything. And the bottom line is, is that now all of these things are going to be, all of these tests that come down are going to be, you know, time-wasted in respect to, let's just say, the existing residential situations. And I just don't agree with that. And I don't, out of liberty alone, all right? I mean, the state can adopt any good sense thing, and I think the state, as a libertarian, you know, you can suggest to me that this is what it's going to do, but when you're going to sit there and tell me that I can't get a permit because I have to comply with something I can't afford, I'm not going to do that. And so since the building inspector, and I have knowledge of several buildings that have been built without permits in general, and I can be, you know, I'll show you them. The fact of the matter is, this is wrong to do this. We don't need a bylaw. We need, you know, if people want to do it, it's in the building code, and it's already established under state law, and they exempted this part that's in here. So we shouldn't vote this in because our building is not even going to be required to be green because this expands the situation. All we have to do is go and follow what the state said. This is expanding it. This is worded wrong, get rid of it.
Thank you. Further discussion? Further discussion, Article 2.
I'm Deborah Lee Batolomeo. I live on South Road in Templeton.
Thank you.
I was always under the impression, and I've gone to a lot of these meetings, that we, what we're voting on is the motion. This motion isn't complete. He is right. It is saying both new construction and existing buildings of a residential and commercial nature. If we're going to vote on something, at least have it read the right way so that people know what they're voting on. I've never seen warrants as messy as the ones we got this time and at the annual town meeting. I think that crossing stuff out is what you do in grammar school. But I really think that we should move the question until they can get it straightened out. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
One minute, one minute.
Point of order, sir.
Point of order, go ahead.
Was that a motion that you said to move the question?
Yeah.
Then I second it.
Okay. Point of order, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Moderator, not Mr. Chairman, I had asked for the floor prior, and I didn't hear the word saying I make a motion to move the question.
And you were not acknowledged.
No.
I didn't recognize you.
Okay, so you were going to recognize.
Okay, so let's clarify something right now. We're not moving the question, okay? There's not a second to it. You are up next. Now acknowledging you, go ahead.
Just real quick, I want to say that this language here is actually coming from the state of what they suggest. This is boilerplate. You can more than likely find this, and I don't know how many communities have adopted this already, probably higher than 80% of communities across Massachusetts have already adopted this similar language here. And I know that the holdup here is saying that there is existing buildings and new constructions, but it's saying for any issuance of a building permit for new or existing construction. So if you want to, you know, change wires or anything like that, that's now considered new construction in the home, and you have to comply to this. But it's not saying that we're going to retroactively do these energy ratings for everything.
May I speak again?
Further discussion, Mr. Drury?
I can speak again?
Yes, Mr. Drury?
Thank you.
I just hope it's new material. You've made some valid points, and I'm hearing you. You've got the microphone.
Excuse me, not to debate you on new material, I want to comment on the fact, the expert said the language was different. I agree with the expert. The expert, basically reading what I just read about the residential or commercial aspects of being exempt, this includes these aspects, and this is different language. And again, the bottom line of this is to get a grant, okay, and to be applying for such things. I also asked the question, is the grant a grant that's free, or is it a grant that you have to pay back? Because some grants you have to pay back, like student loans or whatever. And so if you're going to get a grant at the expense of us being green to fix your buildings, which you're already under the code have to fix anyway, and you have to comply with the code, you're actually trying to get the grant by applying this language to us and force us into our homes being complied by this when we had some liberty. I disagree with this language, and that's the bottom line. I would like to move the question as a motion at this point.
Okay, thank you. We're not moving the question, I can't, okay? We will answer your question, though. Do we have to pay back the $150,000? That's your question, Mr. Drury?
Yes.
If you have to pay it back or not?
Mr. Moderator, I'd actually like to defer these questions to the expert right down here to answer both the question of, do we have to return these funds back to, based off the grant? And the second question from Mr. Drury, which was also, does this language here state that we have to retroactively check new constructed buildings?
Yeah, that's fine. He'll be recognized, we're looking for an answer. Thank you. Thank you.
These grants are not... They're outright grants. There's no matching grant involved in the process. The Green Communities Act was created and said that if you go through five specific criteria, and only if you go through all five specific criteria, you're eligible for at least a designation grant. Once that first designation grant is awarded and you spend it on municipal buildings for things like insulation in a firehouse, or a new boiler, or new LED lightings, things to reduce your energy, which, by the way, reduces your taxpayer dollars on energy, once you spend that initial grant, you're eligible to apply for more grants in the future years. None of those grants are refundable. None of those grants are repayable. A grant is a grant is a grant. And with regards to the language here, the language of the motion that you're voting on is to adopt the appendix to the standard building code, and the appendix is Number 115AA. And the appendix of 115AA, which I have in my hand if you want to see it in greater detail, the appendix includes both new residential construction, old residential construction, new commercial construction, old commercial construction, because the building code covers all of those items. The piece of the stretch code that is different from the standard building code is only for new residential construction and new commercial construction over 100,000 square feet. So, it does not... There is no concern about if I sell my house, do I have to upgrade the house before I sell it, like I do with septic systems? No, that is not included whatsoever. If you have a house, it's exempt from the stretch code. If you put an addition on, it's exempt from the stretch code. It's not exempt from the building code. And so, in your town, you would go to Section 115AA to find which way are we doing it? Are we doing the new stuff or the existing stuff? But it's all in one page rather than multiple pages. I hope that's more clear.
Thank you. Yes, further discussion? Go ahead.
Gil Noel, Winchester Street. I think the confusion here is that this is contract language and not just, you know, just a sentence. It's contract language. So, we're agreeing to adopt this code, Number 115AA, under the relevant sections of the building code. And that's the key, under relevant sections. So, it's either gonna be under the section that says "new construction." There'll be rules under the existing building section, whether it's commercial or residential. And so, I think we're reading more into this than we have to. That's all.
Thank you. Further discussion? Further discussion, Article 2. All in favor of Article 2 signify by saying yes?
Yes!
Opposed?
No!
Article 2 passed at 7:33 PM. Article 3.
Mr. Moderator, John Kappelis. Article 3. I move to waive the reading of the... And approve the article and as published, accepting the phrase "to see if the town will vote to" and the phrase "or take any other action related thereto."
Cameron Fortes, Vice Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I second.
Second. Okay. Advisory Committee?
Mr. Moderator, Advisory Committee recommends for this article...
And just so everybody's clear, it is going to be... It's gonna be in your hand when you walked in as well, so if anybody wanted to... If you didn't get it, there's the table up front. Further discussion? I hate to say, I'm not sure which one, so go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Jelenuski.
Thank you.
South Main Street. Just a point of clarification. On the summary statement, the second sentence refers to approximately 40 private ways in Templeton, but the last sentence says "land which abut upon public way." Is that correct? Shouldn't that say "private way"? On the summary, last sentence.
Mr. Moderator?
Can you answer that question?
Yeah, that is correct. It should say "private way." That is our mistake.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Randy Brown, 116 Main Street, Ottawa.
Thank you.
I see that we have over 40 public private roads in town, and I just don't think this is really a good idea because we don't have the funds, the manpower, to maintain the town roads we have in town right now. There's at least three bridges in town that need to be replaced. There's no funding to do it in the near future, and I just don't think it's a good idea for us to start fixing private roads until we can fix our own roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Steve Drury, Drury Lane.
Thank you.
Article 34, present law, bylaw, says that a way shall... That private streets shall be accepted... No private street shall be accepted by the town of Templeton as a private way, or a public way, rather. My glasses. Unless all of the following conditions have been met. And then, there's three conditions, and I could go on to read them. What it comes to write down to is that... The interesting one is that there has to be endorsed by the planning board. And again, one of my neighbors decided to make a driveway in his property, never went to the town, had called DigSafe because they involved the water line in that digging. It's just something that doesn't work in the aspects of allowing, you know, the town to come in by majority of the people on that particular road, to make an impediment, to be charged for when there's another process. The other process is to come before the town and to ask that the road be adopted as a road, and then formatted, and so forth. This seems to be like, hey, pay us back! And again, we have a town representative who sits there and says, "We can't afford this kind of thing because this is gonna be a work ethic situation from the employees of the town, and we're supposed to be in debt."
Further discussion, Article 3.
Mr. Moderator? Oh, sorry.
Oh. Okay. Kate Fulton, Bridge Street. I'm wondering if... This is just a question, but is Senior Drive considered a private or a public way? As originally, the road was, I believe, private because it was a horseshoe road leading into a housing estate. It now... It now has a point at which it can lead either into the property of the COA, which I assume is owned by the town, or into the private property of SK Management. If I could have a clarification on that so that I can understand whether just that section leading into the COA is... Is it public or private? And could this or would this affect the rest of the horseshoe as the original road was designed? Thank you.
Thank you. Can somebody answer if that's a public or private?
Mr. Moderator, John Kappelis, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Senior Way is a driveway that goes to a town building. It's a driveway. It's a long driveway, but it is a driveway that goes to a town facility. It's not a road. It's a driveway. I know it has a street sign, but it... I mean, it's a long driveway that goes to a town building.
Nope.
Mr. Ottawa, can I recognize the town administrator for a second?
Yes.
He's got some more insight on this.
Yes.
Carter Terranzini, the town administrator. I'd like to respond to two concerns that were raised. The first, as to whether or not we would expend town funds in the repair of private ways. So, the fact is that town funds get expended, but if you look at Section 6.0 of the proposed bylaw, all costs incurred for the repairs for workforce, that's if there are personnel out there, materiel, or private contractors, and generally, these repairs are done by private contractors, are recovered through a betterment to be assessed upon all property owners having frontage upon the way. So, we don't take money out of other projects. These are separate and distinct, and the chairman will speak to that when we get to the next article. The second question or statement spoke to acceptance of private ways, and there's absolutely nothing in here that would cause the acceptance of a private way by virtue of having made a temporary repair to it. People on a private way, if they want their road accepted, would still have to go through all of the steps, having appropriate rights of way, the road having been brought up to a full standard. But what this allows to do, and we had two examples this spring, one road that had deteriorated to the point where it required well over $30,000 in work, and those property owners really struggled to get that together. This would have allowed, if the funds were available, for us, upon their petition, to go in there, do that repair work, assess the costs of that repair, and recover it through a betterment. This is authorized by statute, but only by adopting a bylaw such as this can we assist the residents of private ways with temporary repairs that they themselves will ultimately have to bear the cost of.
Thank you. Cameron, I believe you're next. Did you have something? You're... Okay. That's what it was? All right. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Moderator. Kenneth Case, 47, Evans Circle, Templeton.
Ken, just a little bit...
I happen to live on one of these roads.
A little closer to the microphone. Just... You could take it... Yep. Take it right out if you want to.
Really? Okay. 47, Evans Circle, Templeton. I happen to live on one of these roads. I've lived there for 45 years. Okay? A betterment fee to me is when you improve somebody's... Well, let's put it this way. A betterment fee is supposed to be a fee that's charged when your property's improved. Okay? By you paving or you fixing my road, and you... I believe Luann's right there now. Okay? I pay just the same taxes as every one of you people pay. I don't get a break on my taxes. I pay just like it's a paved road. They plow your roads three or four times. They plow Evans Circle once for the same money. And then, they tell us, "Well, you gotta fix your road, or we're not gonna plow it." People got together and they fixed the road. But the point is, these roads, the town should bite the bullet and turn around and take a road a year, or two roads a year. Forty-five years ago, these roads would have been accepted. You would have been getting paid from the state for them. And now, you want the individual landowners to turn around and pay to bring the roads up to code. Half of Evans Circle used to be paved. The paving's worn down in the 45 years. It's gone. Now, if you have a broken water main out there, you're gonna send the water department out, and they're gonna fix the broken water main because it's their water main. They already claimed it, and they charge rates to go onto it. You turn around, and the light company comes out, they prune the trees because they don't want their wires down. But you're telling me, after paying 45 taxes, and on top of that, after paying for sewers in the town, that I don't get, but we still had to pay our share? And now, you want to charge me a betterment fee? I can't support this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Further discussion?
Steve Drury, Drury Lane.
Thank you.
To address the impediment, of course, that would be an assessment after the contractor and contracting is done, then that fee would then be so divided to the...
Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
To the people. I'm gonna ask if I'm correct...
Mr. Jury, one second. What's that?
The betterment article is Article 4. We're on Article 3, just improvements to private ways. So, I...
Okay. So...
The betterment that we're speaking to, that he was speaking to, was the fee... Was the fee of fixing the road. That's what we're addressing. Am I correct on that, Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Moderator, Article 3 really just says that the town has a right to repair, if so be, a private way. The betterment fund, which is Article 4, is talking about levying a fee to make those improvements. So, they're two distinct articles. My apologies, and my mistake. Let me...
Well, I'm addressing what the administrator...
Let's just get some clarification. Yep. One second.
So, now I'm confused.
Okay. No, it's okay. Let's get some clarification. That's fine. Sure. We are on Article 3. Carter, you being recognized?
Carter Terranzini, the town administrator. The statute, Chapter 46N, which you'll find on the Voters' Guide, Page 35, if you look at Paragraph E, speaks specifically if betterment charges shall be assessed. And the confusion that's happening here is that most people are used to what I'm gonna call a typical betterment, in which a sewer line is put in, a water line is put in, a road is completely reconstructed upon it having been accepted, or prior to it being accepted. There's also a betterment phrase applied to the repairs of private ways, temporary repairs, by the specific language created in Chapter 46N by the state legislature. So, there are... And it does get confusing a little bit. There's the typical betterments that you're thinking of as when you did your sewer project, and then there are, by definition, by the legislature, betterments for the repairs of private ways. They're different in scale. They're different in scope. The legislature simply used the same language to describe these two different things.
Does that clear it up? Mr. Jury?
Yes and no, only on the sense that I still think... You're asking the people on the road to make a petition, therefore, they'd be responsible under some sort of contract to then pay the fee for fixing the road. However, it does suspend Article 34 and its parts, where it says that, you know, this... The road has to be 24. And in particular, I don't know what road you're speaking to, if not all of the roads, but these roads currently, if they're privately owned, Article 34 would apply, and you're trying to suspend that situation. And as I said before, there's a process of bringing in roads to the town as one of the individuals who live on the road could do, and then the town would adopt these roads and get paid by the state. So, I disagree that these... Again, I disagree with this, and I think it's... We shouldn't bear the road pavement and not own it, you know? I mean, intimate domain must be the next question you're gonna do and adopt the road after they've fixed it.
Further discussion? Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, go ahead.
Kenneth Case, 47, Evans Circle, Templeton. Did I understand somebody up there to say that there wasn't... This article didn't have a betterment fixed into it? That's your mistake? Okay. Because the way I read the article, there is definitely a betterment attached to it. You know? If somebody's... And I want to ask everybody here, if they come by and they put sidewalks in front of your house, and the town wants to charge you a... put sidewalks in front of your house, and the town wants to charge you a betterment for putting a new sidewalk in, or every time, I've lived in this town for 60-something years, 60, I'm not gonna go there, but the whole time I've lived here, I've seen roads done over two, three, four, five times. Your road was improved, you didn't, nobody, nobody, no town asked you for a betterment fee for that. Because these contractors went out of business, and they stuck the people that were living there, these people have lived out there for the last 45-plus years, paying full taxes. I really think the town needs to take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion. Further discussion, Article 3. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
Article 3 did not pass at 7:51 PM. Article 4.
Mr. Moderator, John Kapples, Article 4. I move to where the reading and approve the article published, excepting the introductory phase of to see if the town will vote to, end phrase, or to take any other action related
Cameron Fortes, Vice Chairman of Templeton Board of Selectmen, second.
Yes, okay. Do you have a point of order?
Yeah, I was kinda wondering, how do I get these articles read, so people can hear what's in them?
We discussed that-
You can say that we can read, but I can't even read that fast. I'd like the article read, so everybody here has the same understanding of it.
Okay, so the article is in your hand, if you'd like to read it.
I know. I don't wanna read it. I think they should be reading it, they're proposing it.
With essence, with regards to time, you're gonna notice that, as the articles go on, I believe there's one that's actually five pages, okay? We're not gonna sit here for five pages of, hold on, okay? It's in your hand, it's printed properly, all the information's in there. That's the reason why we're doing it, trying to save time, not backdoing anything, because, listen, I'm not for or against any of these, okay?
I understand that.
So, if you, if you like them-
But it's being backdoored, you just heard him say, the last article, I made a mistake. It shouldn't, if I hadn't have picked up the betterment fee, I would have voted for that.
Okay, well, mistakes can happen. He admitted to the mistake, but either way, you have the evidence in your hand, and the town will vote. If you're for it, then you say yes, and if you're against it, you say no.
So, there's-
That's the bottom line.
... reading, from now on, we're not gonna read any more of these.
We didn't say that. We said, these are, this is the way there. Advisory Committee, go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, Advisory Committee recommends for this article.
Further discussion, Article 4.
Steve Drury, Drury Lane.
Thank you.
I'd move to table this issue due to the fact that the last question in article kinda refers to betterments, and this collection of money on the last article could have been used for this article, and it's kinda related. So, and since we voted against the last article, I would ask that we vote and move the question and table it, or let's, let me make it a motion to move the question. If someone will second me?
I'll second.
Mr. Drury?
Yeah?
Okay. I think you asked for about three things there. I'm a little confused at what you're asking for.
Maybe I'm making a verbal motion to move the question, and I was seconded by-
Yes.
Okay. You can't move, let me explain the rules. You can't get up here and move the question, okay? The question has to be moved with somebody for the question, discussion for it, and then somebody against it. And then at some point, we can make a motion to move the, to move the question. So, to answer your question, no, we can't do that right now.
Okay, we can't do it right now.
If you're against it, okay, I understand.
All right, no, I understand that, and I apologize for getting that point. That is a major point. The other side needs to be able to speak.
Hmm, correct.
So, I'll wait.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion, Article 4. Go ahead, sir.
John Thomas, Crossroad. Because the previous article was voted down, can someone explain to me what the effect of this article will be?
Thank you. Somebody can answer that?
Mr. Moderator? I'd like to record, and it's the town administrator, Carter Terranzini.
So, notwithstanding that the previous article failed, this special legislation would allow the town, should it decide to do so in the future, to adopt a bylaw to undertake permanent repairs. Again, a distinction, Chapter 46N provides for temporary repairs, which are things that are meant to have a shorter life cycle, but there are a number of private ways that are not suitable for acceptance, and yet do need more permanent work. So, there's no statewide statute on that unless special legislation such as this, such as Gloucester did, is passed. The second piece of this is that if there are betterments in the future, when those betterments are repaid, they would go into the betterment fund, and those monies could then be used to do additional betterments, so that you don't have to constantly be trying to scratch, looking for the money. That's what this, that's what this does.
Follow-up, go ahead.
Having voted down the previous article, what would be the circumstances that would cause those betterments to be, to be enacted under this article?
So, let us for a moment forget the previous article and speak to the possibility that the town adopted a bylaw for permanent repairs. And let us say that a road came in and petitioned for permanent repairs, which would be a complete reconstruction of a base, and let us say for a moment that that cost $75,000, and let us say for a moment that the town had some free cash and did that. When those people pay that betterment back, it would go into the betterment fund, those funds would sit there and then be available for the next town road that were to come in. Think in terms of a revolving, think in terms of a revolving fund. The second piece is that if you were to do other types of betterments, whether they were sewer, sidewalk, street, when those are paid for, as people are assessed, those go into the betterment fund, and those are available there again. And again, think of this as a revolving fund.
Thank you. Further discussion. Go ahead, Paul.
Mr. Moderator. I came to a town meeting tonight.
Paul, if you could just identify yourself, please.
Paul Quatroki, Two Military Drive, Templeton, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
I still live in the same place.
Yes, you do.
But I came to a town meeting tonight, and we don't have a meeting here, we have a discussion about something that's not going to happen. We just turned down an article about private ways. There's very few people here to remember how private ways ever became something in our articles. I'm one of them. We got private ways because we had to get 911. And for the rescue squad and fire and police to find you, the telephone company required you to be on a road and be covered. That's how we got private ways. We all got our own little private way. I have one. Now, we turned down an article a minute ago, and we shouldn't forget it. I don't want to come up with an article for betterment funds for the future. For one thing, we've been paying betterment funds for, I don't know how long. When the sewer went by our house 1,500 feet away, we got a betterment fund. We had to pay for it. I don't have sewer. That is a betterment fund. No, we don't need something for the future, we need something for the present. And when we come up with something for ways to be repaired, private ways to be repaired, then we can come up with a betterment fund for private ways to be repaired. Not now. We're wasting time, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen.
I agree.
This is getting ridiculous.
Thank you. Further discussion, further discussion.
Could I have clarification? Is that a no for the, or, aren't in favor?
Mr. Drury, yes. That's a no.
And that's still, okay, I'm still pending and reading that.
Further discussion, Article 4. Further discussion. All in favor of Article 4 signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
Article 4 did not pass at 8:01 PM. Article 5.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to make a motion to pass over Article 5.
Second that, John Kapples.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. Respectfully, I don't know if you-
Mr. Drury, do you have a point of order?
Oh, a point of order, yeah.
Okay. There's, there's, let me explain to you, there's been a motion to move the question, it's been seconded.
Right.
So, what we are going to do is, we're going to vote whether or not we're gonna move that question, okay?
Well, we didn't have a, a point of order, we didn't have a discussion on a yes or, or favor or non, or nay, which he just did to me, and he just came up and wants to move the question. I wanna vote the question.
That's exactly what we're gonna do, yes. Right now, okay?
Right now, we're gonna vote the question.
Yep. All in favor of Article 5 by moving, moving that question, moving Article 5, okay? Not the actual article, so we're clear. All in favor of moving it signify by saying yes.
Yes.
And opposed? Okay, that's unanimous at 8:03 PM. We're moving Question 5.
Point of order.
Yes, go ahead.
Again, the question was to move the question, okay? And we wanna vote on the question, as to the question, so it can't be brought up again. So, the bottom line is, is that there was no discussion of nays and yays, and that's exactly what you just did to me.
No, no. See, let me explain it to you. What they're asking is that we have no discussion on this, okay? The town just voted unanimously not to have any discussion on it. If you wanted to have discussion on it, then you should have said yes. Everybody said no, we're moving Question 5.
I came, I came down respectfully, Mr. Moderator, I came down to speak to that-
Right.
Due to the fact that he said, "No, I'm not arguing the point, I'll accept the vote the way it stands, 'cause it'll, it just allows them to bring it up again."
Thank you. Article 6.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Cameron Fortes, Vice Chairman of Templeton Board of Selectmen. I move to enact a section, oh, boy, 48? No, that's 58, to its, to the town's general bylaws to be entitled Employment Contracts and reads as follows. Mr. Moderator, do you want me to repeat that, since I misspoke?
You're reading the motion.
Okay. Let me, let me amend that. Okay. I move to enact a Section 58, the town's general bylaws to be entitled Employment Contracts and reads as follows. The town administrator may negotiate and execute an employment contract for a period of time not to exceed three years to provide for the performance standards, salaries, fringe benefits, and other conditions of employment, including, but not limited to, severance pay, relocation expenses, reimbursement for expenses incurred, oh, did I skip? Okay, okay. For expenses incurred in the performance of duties of office, liability insurance, performance standards, and leave for all department heads. Such employment contracts shall be subject to Board of Selectmen action and shall prevail over any conflicting provisions of town personnel bylaw, rule, or regulation.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
John Kapples, I second that.
Advisory Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Advisory Committee recommends in favor of this article noting that some elected boards have power over employment contracts, such as the Board of Health, Planning Board, any elected boards or commissions of the town. You have to take that into consideration in this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Jelenuski, South Main Street. This article may sound like a good idea, but it's a really bad idea, because it has, it will have unintended consequences. Which department heads aren't specified? So, who are they? What about the enterprise departments? Those department heads do not report to the Board of Selectmen. They report to their duly-elected commissioners, such as the sewer department, which I'm a member of. You can't have it both ways. The sewer enterprise was approved by voters specifically to remove responsibility from the selectmen and place it in the hands of an elected Board of Commissioners. This article in general will place all department heads at a disadvantage, because they don't have a union to represent them. The Board of Selectmen need to manage employees under their command, and let the enterprise organizations like the sewer department and Light and Water manage employees under their command. And this is a quote from the Selectmen's handbook. "One of the biggest mistakes that boards of selectmen make is trying to micromanage departments that are not under their control." I'd also like to read a quote from the General Laws. Chapter 41, Section 65, and again, relating to the sewer commissioners. "If sewer commissioners be chosen, they shall, as to sewers and drains, exclusively have the powers, perform the duties, and be subject to liabilities and penalties of selectmen and road commissioners." Having said that, I would, I'm not sure how to present this. I have a rewritten article, I'd like to make a motion to present.
Okay, and it's in writing?
Yes.
Okay.
Good for Templeton in terms of liability issues. And right now, if we have to hire or elect boards and train them in contract negotiations when we're already down money, I think you're just opening up a whole can of expenses and a lot of liability and legal issues here.
Thank you. Further discussion? This is on the amended motion.
Beverly Bartolomeil.
Thank you.
South Road, Templeton. The town administrator has no authority over the Board of Health. They are an elected board, just like the sewer commissioners and the water commissioners and the light commissioners. So Tom is right. This does not, this should not include those people. They have, they have their own leaders who have been elected by the people. The town administrator, it's his job to work for you and it is your job to work for the people. He has no authority over the rest of the boards that have been elected. So I think Tom's substitute motion should stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Tom Jelenowski, South Main Street.
Thank you.
I think the substitute motion should stand. For one thing, you don't have to have an employment contract. Most, all the town department heads now, I don't believe, have a contract per se. There are personnel policies in place for them to continue working under. And my belief is most of the other heads that have, that report to boards will probably go along with this. The problem the sewer department has is the heavy-handed treatment that we've been receiving from the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator, trying to usurp the authority of the sewer commission and micromanage our department. And this would go a long way to preventing that in the future. So like I said, like I quoted before, one of the biggest mistakes that the Boards of Selectmen make in this state is trying to micromanage departments, which this is clearly going to do. Thank you.
Tom, Tom, Tom. All right. So you had said that you don't support the motion that you just wrote?
I support the motion.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Further discussion?
Steve Drury, Drury Lane.
Thank you.
I'm really weary of the fact that the town administrator can, really actually controls the purse. Comments made here about the Board of Health, happen to know through dealing with them that the town administrators won't fund certain things that I need done. So the fact of the matter is, is that one of the citizens that work and talks about the exemption that is prior, that may be fine, but leaving, I would agree to that, but then again, I wouldn't agree to the fact that the town administrator could continue. I think there should be more involved. The town fathers, the selectmen, women, all should be involved in the decision. If it's left up to one person, too many things can happen. The town administrator should just be administering, you know, the funds and the monies and that type of situation. And it should be a collective that actually makes decisions on employment situations and so forth. And I don't know if that's the standing now, but I wouldn't vote for this.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Cameron Forbes, Vice Chairman of the Templeton Board of Selectmen.
Tom Jelenowski, South Main Street. One more comment.
Tom, one second. He's got the microphone. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
So I just want to point out, and we'll use the Board of Assessors because I don't want to say anything about the sewer department in this light, but we'll say the Board of Assessors, and I'm sorry, Luanne, but, so say the Board of Assessors determine that Luanne is doing a fantastic job, which she is very well, and says she deserves a $200,000 paycheck, which would be fantastic for Luanne, I'm sure she'd have a celebration over that, but our budgets can't support that. And if you leave this to an elected board that does not understand the whole picture, the holistically what our budget looks like, which would be our town administrator and the Board of Selectmen, to say, "We can or we cannot afford that $200,000 merit-based raise." So that gets approved by this elected board if this amendment goes through. $200,000 out of the pocket. How do we budget for that? How do we Band-Aid that? Because now they selfishly went and did that, or say they, you know, whatever it may be, now we're in a position where, what do we do? We have to abide by it. It's now in the bylaw, we have to say, "Okay, $200,000, Luanne, there you go." And where are we now? Not in a good position. We're definitely not moving forward. We backslid. And so the purpose of this is to allow for contract negotiations to be done holistically, to keep the entire budget in mind, to know where merit-based raises are and should be. Now, if we want to address the point of micromanaging the sewer department, the micromanaging, we're not telling you when to press your sewage, we're not telling you what chemicals to add, and we're not telling you what operationally you should be doing in the sewer department. We are trying to minimize budgetary risk to the town, which I'm sure everybody sitting in this room right now knows was not managed properly in the past. It is getting better, but in the past, when people were allowed to do whatever they wanted in their own section of Templeton, we had disastrous results. This is to get away from that, and this is what the original intent of the motion was. So I am fervently against this amended proposal.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Tom Jelenowski, South Main Street. I totally disagree with those statements. And as a point of reference, this body voted in May to approve the sewer department budget, which included a 2% raise for the non-union employees. This board has refused to acknowledge that vote since May and has not approved that, and they have imposed more restrictions and more constraints and conditions upon that raise. You should know, this board ignored the vote in May, and it'll probably do the same again.
Further discussion?
Beverly Bartolomeil.
Thank you.
I was on the Board of Health for over four years. The Board of Health answers to no one. They have more power than all of you people sitting there. I believe the sewer department, the light department, and the water department are in the same boat. They are part of this town. They have not lost their mind. They will never lose their mind. They will never do anything that's going to hurt this town, but they have a right to run their department. And that's that.
Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator. I just want to say that we're not telling any department how to be run, we're just suggesting that there is budget contract, or employment contracts that need to be negotiated and needs to be with a budget in mind. This wouldn't be done without consultation from any of those elected boards. This is not something that Carter is just going to go in there and, or any town administrator in the future and do something that is against the will of that board. It's to keep contract negotiations in one place, to expedite the process, to have one knowledgeable in there, so we don't have to have somebody on each elected board that is knowledgeable in contracts. I do want to also speak to Tom Jelenowski's point about the sewer department not getting their 2% raise. We have a personnel policy in which you need to do an annual review of the employee, and to this point in time, Kent Songer has not submitted that, and therefore, that 2% raise is still suspended until that performance review has been done. And I believe we've discussed this at length, Tom. At this point, I'd like to recognize Carter Terranzini.
Well, it breaks my heart to do this.
Carter.
I have, I'm sorry, Carter Terranzini, Town Administrator. Well, it breaks my heart a bit to do this, and I'm disappointed in having to make this suggestion. I always get nervous about amendments, major amendments that get made on the floor without having had a chance to talk them through and think about the potential unintended consequences down the line. And the unintended consequences is effectively to go to a situation in which elected boards get to do for their department heads essentially whatever they want to do in contract for. I have grave concerns as to whether or not that would even make it through the Attorney General's office, and I have grave concerns about setting up a situation in which Department A, B, or C treats folks substantially differently than folks in Department D, E, and F. That's the whole point of having the uniform personnel bylaw. So my suggestion, my request, is that you vote no on the amendment, and then I'm going to respectfully request everyone, including my board that was kind enough to sponsor this, to vote no on the main motion. We can then go back and consult with all the elected boards and try to come up with some language that they feel comfortable with, includes consultation with them, and yet moves the issue forward. You've lived through the land of independent silos. It doesn't work. Sounds nice, but I think you all know it doesn't work. And I think that deferring this matter and consulting with all the boards could perhaps move us forward without unintended consequences.
Thank you. Further discussion?
John Thomas, Cross Road. Does the last phrase apply to the amendment? Shall prevail over any conflicting provisions?
So the amendment starts back again. It's such employment contract shall be subject to the controlling board's action and shall prevail over any conflicting provisions of any town personnel bylaw, rule, or regulation.
I guess it's those last 20 words or so that bother me, whether we're talking about the amendment or the original one. But if I read that correctly, I'm understanding that while I understand a town administrator can streamline many aspects of town government, does this now mean that a contract from the town administrator would prevail over our personnel bylaws, our existing rules, and our existing regulations?
Mr. Moderator?
If you can answer that question?
I would like to defer this to Town Council, who would have a much better understanding of the legal ramifications.
Tom Harrington, Town Council. So if I understand your question, your question is about the last sentence, which on the screen reads, "Such employment contract shall be subject to Board of Selectmen action and shall prevail over any conflicting provision of any town personnel bylaw, rule, or regulation." So the answer to that is yes, with the understanding that much of what's in the employment contract is likely not going to be specifically conflicting with what's in our personnel bylaws and would be subject to Board of Selectmen approval.
I have a problem passing a bylaw which now enables the town administrator to conflict with our existing bylaws, rules, and regulations. We have our bylaws, rules, and regulations in place because we wanted them, and to now have the town administrator have the right to override that, I think is a mistake.
Man, just follow up. So just, just to be clear, so it's not the, the town administrator is doing the negotiating, but it's the Board of Selectmen that would be approving. And so any, any policy that's a Board of Selectmen policy, either they can vote to override it here, or they could vote to change the policy. So I think they have that power when you're talking about a personnel rule or regulation. The bylaw is the bylaw, but the rule or regulation, they currently have that authority anyways, just to be clear.
Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead.
Cameron Forbes, Vice Chairman of the Templeton Board of Select. I believe one of the things that was in the bylaw, Carter, if I'm not mistaken, was that there was a, supposed to be a review on the date of hire, and we put in this bylaw kind of bypassed because it's, it makes it really difficult. If you hire someone on April 27th, and you have to go in back for an annual review every year on April 27th, but you have people that are hired sporadically, and we don't always hire on April 27th, it makes it very difficult to do a non-consolidated, just annual review of all department heads. Instead, he has to just abide by that bylaw. That's, that's kind of what this is stating, so that the contract would be, when negotiated, would be something of the effect that will be done every, the start of every fiscal year or before the budget season, so that merit-based reviews and pay raises can be given due to that. That was the primary bylaw.
Okay. Thank you. What I'm going to do, unless there's any further discussion, what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the substitute motion, and then we'll vote on it. The town administrator may negotiate and execute an employment contract for a period of time not to exceed three years, to provide for the performance standards, salary, French, benefits, and other conditions of employment, including but not limited to severance pay, relocation expenses, reimbursements, reimbursement for expenses incurred in the performance of duties of office, liability insurance, performance standards, and leave for all department heads. For all department heads, excepting any department head whose department is controlled by an elected board. For any department controlled by an elected board, the town administrator may only act as described above if the controlling board for said department first authorizes the town administrator to act. Such employment contract shall be subject to the controlling board's actions and shall prevail over any conflicting provisions of any town personnel bylaw, rule, or regulation. That is what we are voting on. All in favor, signify by saying yes. Opposed?
No.
Okay, that did not pass unanimously at 8:36 PM. Okay, we're back to the original Article VI that's posted up there. Any further discussion on that? Any further discussion?
I feel that this article is too vague, too broad, and it tries to give authority where it doesn't belong. So I would absolutely never vote for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Tom Jelenowski, South Main Street.
Thank you.
The first sentence says, "A town administrator may negotiate and execute employment contract." Does that mean that the department heads are required to participate? Is he required to negotiate with every department head, and that they are required to participate? There may be some department heads that want to continue employment under the existing bylaws of the town, personnel bylaws. Can someone answer that?
Mr. Moderator?
I believe, yes, go ahead.
Okay. Can I defer this to Town Council to discuss the legal language?
Seems like everybody's pointing their fingers over here, so.
Again, Tom Harrington, Town Council. So, so "may" is permissive, so he may, he is not required to do so. I think if you read further on down, it requires selectmen's action as well to initiate the process.
Could you, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said.
So you asked about, your question was about the word "may."
Yes.
Okay, so "may" is, "may" is permissive, so he may do it, but he does not have to do it. If we substituted the word "shall" for "may," then he would be required to do it.
So the town administrator may engage in an employment contract. What about the receiving party, the department head? Are they required to participate?
Well, I think that's, that's any employee. If, if the employer wants that person to have a contract, that person has a contract, or the, or the employer is left with the decision of continuing the employment without a contract or not.
Thank you. I think this whole article should be voted no.
Yeah.
Thank you. Further discussion, Article VI. Further discussion? All in favor of Article VI, signify by saying yes. Opposed?
No.
And that did not pass unanimously at 8:39 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Cameron Forbes, Vice Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I move to waive the reading and approve the articles published, excepting the phrase "to see if the town will vote to" in the phrase, or take any other action related thereto, provided, however, that the reference of MGL Chapter 240 and Section 14 shall be amended to read MGL Chapter 40.
Do I have a second?
Charles Calhoun, I second that.
Advisory Committee.
Mr. Moderator, Advisory Committee recommends for this article.
Further discussion, Article VII.
I think I can understand about the dog licenses, but I'd like somebody to explain it to me why it's got to go from 15 per dog or to 20 per dog. As always, I want is an explanation on why. Because it takes about two minutes of somebody's time to give me a license tag when I go in there.
Can somebody answer his question?
Or is this just a money-making issue for the town of Templeton?
I'm trying to get you an answer.
Yeah.
Can you answer his question?
Yeah, can I?
Okay.
Can I get some clarification? You're referencing Section C, correct? At the adoption of these bylaws, the annual licensing fee shall be fixed at 15 for a spayed, neutered dog and 20 for an intact dog?
Yeah.
And you're asking where those numbers came from?
Yeah.
Carter, can you speak to that, please?
Detailed questions on this, I'd prefer to, excuse me, I'm sorry. Carter Terranzini, Town Administrator. Detailed questions on the bylaw, I would defer to Town Council, who drafted it, with respect to the increases in the fee structure. The animal control officer is currently costing over $23,000 a year, and the increase in the fees was a hoped-for attempt to help recover revenues, to cover that cost, which currently, we're less than half recovering that. So it's more than just licensing the animal, but there's the cost of enforcing the bylaw, strays, and other, other expenses.
So you're saying, then, if I understand you're right, that whatever you collect for dog, like, dog fees is going to the dog officer?
It doesn't go directly there, but it's pretty much that. We're paying the town of Winchand in over $23,000 this current year. That will go up each year as it, as it does, and the expenses that we're covering right now are only about half of that. So it doesn't go direct from the town court to the dog officer, the animal control officer today.
Okay. So I guess my question is that it's being used for the expenses of the dog officer?
Yeah, it basically recovers the animal control officer.
No problem.
Further discussion?
Drury, Drury Lane. I was reading this, and it says that it's sort of a violation of the Section 12. If the dog devicates any feces, I guess there's going to be within 10 feet of a public way. Does that mean that the dog officer's going to be chasing around leased people and making sure that they clean up the devicat manure, whatever you want to call it? And if they don't, I'm wondering how they're going to be caught, and the, and the fines of 25, 50, and 100, $200 seems a pretty, pretty outstanding for, you know, something you're not in control of. I know if the dog gets loose, then what? You know, and how do you prove the pile of whatever is from that dog?
Further discussion? Further discussion, Article VII. All in favor of Article VII, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
It passed at 8:45 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Cameron Forbes, Vice Chairman of the Templeton Board of Selectmen. I move to appropriate the sum of $12.30 to an accountant titled Mark Diala-Ride, and to meet said appropriation by a transfer from the revenues received from the Transportation Network Community Fee Assessment.
Charles Calhoun, I second that.
Second, okay. Advisory Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Advisory Committee recommends for this article.
Very good. Further discussion, Article eight. Further discussion, Article eight. All in favor of Article eight, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? So that passed unanimously at 8:46 PM.
Mr. Moderator, Doug Morrison, Select Board. I move to appropriate the sum of $50,000 to pay the cost of a field data collection and recommended replacement structure study on the so-called Stony Bridge, and to meet said appropriation by a transfer of said sum from certified free cash.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Diane Haley-Brooks, Select Board, second that motion.
Thank you. Advisory Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Advisory Committee recommends in favor of this article.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Steve Drury, Drury Lane. My comment to this is quite simple. Stony Brook Bridge should end. There shouldn't be a bridge. There should be one lane on one side, and then the bridge should be shut down. The idea of spending $50,000 for a study is ludicrous. I mean, you're either going to put a bridge in or you ain't. That's that. And, you know, I don't need a study. But I'll tell you this, you know, for their reasoning, for the EMTs, you know, it's probably just as short to go either way, and for each person that lives on that particular way, to get to their place, you'd go in those separate directions. In between Stony Brook is just a huge lake, you know, and it's swamp. And I would suggest that if we didn't have a bridge, I mean, the animals and whatnot would be much better off. I'm sure they don't prefer us being there. And so I would say that we shouldn't vote for this, and we should just put up, you know, and end the Stony Brook problem due to the fact that the flooding and so forth and, and costs, we just can't afford it.
Thank you. Further discussion, Article nine.
Beverly Bartolomeil. I talked to the mailman. I asked him, I said, "Do you go over Stony Bridge to deliver mail?" And he says, "No, I don't." And the day that I went down there to watch Queen Lake being drained, the mailman actually turned around and went the other way. I think the only one that is going to go to Stony Bridge is the bunch that has the explosives up on the side. We have roads. We can't drive down. How on earth are we going to do this? And where's the money coming from? Free cash, yeah. Next year ain't going to be so much free cash. I agree with Stephen in a way. Pleasant Street Bridge in Garden has been out of operation for how many years now? And it's in the middle of a populated area. I think if our finances were in better shape, if there was a necessity to go over the bridge, it would make some, make sense. Now, I don't live down there, so if somebody that does wants to speak up, fine. In my way of looking at it, it doesn't make much sense, not, not with the way In my way of looking at it, it doesn't make much sense, not with the way things are. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion.
Janice Lefay, Bridge Street. I'm wondering how much money we have in certified free cash.
Certified free cash this year...
Carter.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
Carter Terranzini, Town Administrator. Certified free cash this year was 1.575 roughly millions of dollars. Please remember that when we made a number of appropriations, when we first got our audits, we said that free cash was going to be coming back at us. So what we would call normal and ordinary free cash was around $1 million. I'd like to expand upon the previous speaker, if I might, if that addresses this young lady's question. The idea of spending $50,000 to study the bridge, I can understand is shocking and discomforting. Unfortunately, this culvert, this bridge, is perched over a very narrow channel, and should there be further deterioration, and again, collapse of that into the waterway, we would once again be faced with the possible breach of that causeway. So even if you want to think about abandoning it in place, removing the cap and trying to stabilize it, under today's environmental permitting, you're going to have to do this kind of study anyways. So would I rather spend this money, propose to spend, you're the ultimate spenders of the money, on something else? Absolutely. This is one of those, pay me now, pay me later. At the end of the day, you are going to be spending some amount of money. A study like this gives us the kind of data that we need to apply for a Division of Ecological Restoration Culvert Replacement Grant, one possible source, a pre-disaster mitigation grant from FEMA. It provides the data to go back to our friends on the Community Preservation Committee and try to convince them of the merits of actions, and it opens up a number of doors. So again, while I'm not thrilled about this, I do respectfully request that you vote yes for this.
Thank you. Further discussion.
Randy Brown, 116 Main Street, River. Is this bridge or culvert? It's not really a bridge, actually. It's like a culvert. Open now or still closed?
Is the road open or closed? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
It is closed currently.
So it's currently closed, and on both sides?
Yeah, you definitely cannot get through it right now.
All right. Is the town, does the town have a fund to study any bridges? Because I know Main Street, River, there's a bridge right next to one of the only businesses in town, and over the last two, six months, there's been two holes through. We can look 15 feet down to the river, and the town owns that bridge. Is the town looking at spending any money to repair, like, bridges on main roads or study them?
That's not in the article, but are there any other studies for any other bridges?
Carter Terranzini, Town Administrator. Mr. Moderator. The other bridges are inspected by the state, and we repair those as we get those inspection reports, but we don't have any town-sponsored studies of those other bridges at this point in time, because the inspection reports do not reveal a state of deterioration that would require that at this point.
Further discussion. Go ahead.
Beverly Batalla Mail. $50,000? I initially heard $30,000 getting kicked around, so where did you get the $50,000 number?
I...
Carter Terranzini, Town Administrator. I've become jaundiced of estimates that I get. We were told $35,000 as the estimate by Brian Kreidler, who is the Director of the Division of Ecological Restoration and runs the Culvert Replacement Program, based upon what he had seen in other communities. Being very concerned about that, I raised it to $50,000. I think that we do have some of the engineering firms being interviewed next week. I think we can get the job done within that, but we wanted to try to avoid having to come back or to not be able to proceed, should the engineering fees come in substantially more than Brian's estimate.
Further discussion.
Steve Drury, Drury Lane. Respectfully, I would disagree with that assessment due to the fact is that this is culvert, as you call it, it's not a dam, and the spillage that went over in the heavy rains that had happened that caused pumping situations. If the culvert was completely removed and the natural bearing of the lake was allowed to flow, and the road to end on either side, it's not going to, it's not going to cost us anything for common sense. This is what it is. It's common sense. What do we really need to go across that for? We have two different road entries with two different directions that are easily accessible, and it doesn't do anything about EMTs, and point blank, if we think about the GPS situations, once we achieve that, then the ambulances won't get disturbed over the fact that, you know, the bridge is out. And, you know, and it's better that the bridge is out, because, you know, the animals are going to be much better without us there.
Further discussion.
Susan Mitchell, Royalston Road, Baldenville. I'm all for being environmentally aware, so I understand that the bridge study might be a very good thing, and I realize that we have limited budget and there are lots and lots of needs. But I have to tell you, I was told three years ago that my road, which I've lived on now for 42 years, which has never been resurfaced, was going to be done two years ago. I was told that it had been all engineered, everything was ready to go, and nothing has happened. I saw a gentleman who was at the end of my road one day, who worked for the DPD, and I said, "This was supposed to be done, like, over a year ago. What's happened?" And he said, "I don't know. Somebody dropped the ball." Now, I didn't, I don't know exactly what that means, but I suspect that maybe some state funding didn't come through, maybe an application was not completed. I don't know exactly what the circumstances were. But I'm hearing $50,000 for a bridge study, while our road is actually dangerous. It is so dangerous, nobody wants to plow it. People literally drive down the center of the road, because you don't dare drive in a lane, because of the big potholes and because it's so broken down. So I have some concerns about spending $50,000 when my road is getting to a point where it's not getting to a point, it is actually dangerous, and in some places, it's become nearly impassable.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion. Yes, go ahead. Sure.
Mr. Moderator, Carter Terranzini, Town Administrator. I am saddened by the amount of time that Royalston Road has taken, but I have to be honest with you. Whoever two years ago told you it would be done in two years was wrong, dramatically wrong. A project of this nature is seven to 10 years. There is approximately $12 million available in this region, and for Templeton to get $5.25 million of that, and it's actually been redesigned to a lesser standard to try to reduce the costs, you're trying to get, you know, almost 50% of what's available for the entire region. You know, these projects take a horribly long amount of time, and I'm afraid that the engineers are not always honest with people about how long it's going to take. And when I got here two years ago and they told me it would be on the tip in a year, I'm sorry, but I was, I guess disrespectful to them, I broke out laughing. And sometimes people don't take what I say well, because I tend to be pretty straightforward and honest about these things, and we'll certainly will try to move it along. We have a 25% design fee, design coming up. The challenge, notwithstanding the delays on that project, are that if you want to redo this bridge in any fashion, you must do this study. If you want to remove this bridge and restore it, as had been suggested, you must do this study. If you want to apply for a grant to do any of that work, you must do this study. If you are prepared to leave it in its current state and understand that if it falls in and something happens, you'll have to deal with all of that as well, that's your decision to make at the end of the day.
Further discussion. Ma'am, I'm going to let you follow up, okay? But I just want to make a note. I understand your concern about Royalston Road. That is not what we're discussing here.
I understand.
Okay. I understand how you're trying to relate $50,000 for Stony Bridge.
Right.
It could be used on Royalston Road, in your opinion. I get that. So I'm going to let you follow up, but let's try to stick to Article 9.
And frankly, I am off topic. I just, actually, this is a point of education for me, and I was wondering, and it has nothing to do with the bridge, forgive me, but in Royalston, their roads are like butter, and do you know how a tiny place like Royalston got the funding to do so much with their roads when our road is in such dreadful shape? And again, that's a point of education for me. I don't know.
Okay, again, we don't have an answer for that. It's not in the article. We're trying to stick to Article 9. Further discussion, Article 9.
Ken Buzzell, Whitney Street. I don't care if they fix the bridge or not at Stony Bridge, but it seems to me that $50,000, if you're either going to fix it or not, put the $50,000 towards the bridge and forget about studying it. I mean, what do you got to study? It doesn't work now, so you either need a bridge or you don't. That's one. The other thing is, is this lady's road, whatever he is up there, said it takes seven to 10 years. Does that mean it's going to take seven to 10 years to deal with Stony Bridge after you do the study?
So I believe, he explained it a couple of times, that the study has to be done, whether they're going to fix the bridge or not, no matter what. That was a starting point. Further discussion.
Respectfully...
Hold on, hold on.
Steve Drury.
No, hold on. Do you have an answer as to how long it would take for this bridge to be completed?
Carter Terranzini, Town Administrator. My best estimate, assuming we can secure one of the grants in the coming spring, understanding that it sometimes takes two or three cycles, because they usually get $4 in requests for every dollar, my best estimation is that it will be three to five-plus years, more likely on the long end of the curve.
Go ahead, sir.
Steve Drury, Drury Lane. I'm a, was a carpenter, and I built bridges. And I'll tell you that if you're going to build a bridge, especially a new one, it's going to have to be two lanes, at least down there. And more importantly, there are certain procedures that you could build bridges. We've seen bridges be built and temporary bridges be laid in a matter of weeks. The bottom line is, though, is do we need a bridge? The vote is really to the point of making a study of whether we need the bridge anymore. You know, that passageway that goes through, again, is really what you all have to consider. The fact of the matter is, is it's not that difficult to go from one side to the other. Due to the river and the swamp being there, there's nothing there. So all the people who live on that side, you go that way, and all the people who live on that side, you go in that way. And it doesn't deter anything, and that's what's happening now. So the bottom line is, is if you want to spend $50,000, and I would agree with anyone, you, you know, this study aspect that you're proposing, lots of bridges just go down, and that, and that's the end. They put up danger signs, they fence them in, there's, if there's any liability issues, you know, you could easily fill or open, I would actually open the culvert up and let it, and let it go through, because it's actually a blockage at this point. Now, whether you have environmental issues, we have an environmental board who could go down and say, "Well, we approve that." You know, I don't understand $50,000 when we're, you know, millions of dollars in debt. And I, and this is just, I know it's come up, but we really have to weigh the issue. Do we need this bridge? And as to all the other situations of, you know, recreation, you can still go down there. In fact, the so-called culvert won't stop you from going from one place to the other if you want to go fishing, so I say vote no.
Thank you. Further discussion, Article 9. Further discussion, Article 9. All in favor of Article 9 signify by saying yes.
Yes!
Opposed?
No!
It did not pass at 9:06 PM.
Mr. Moderator. Could I, could we take a hand vote on that? I just didn't quite hear that.
Okay. I'll determine if there's going to be a hand vote or not. I see two people standing up, so at this time, there's no hand vote. I've got four. Five. I'm not asking for votes. Either you stand up or you don't. Seven stand up or not? Okay, now we're going to have a hand count. My hand counters, please.
Mr. Moderator.
Is there a point of order?
Yes, please.
Mr. Moderator, there seems to be some confusion back there, because we can't hear good. Did you say that passed or didn't pass?
It did not pass.
Okay. I think there were some people that were...
Well, we're going to determine it by a hand vote, too. So it did not pass.
Mr. Moderator, I thought you said it passed, and I withdraw my...
Right, we are going to have a hand vote, and there'll be no doubt about it. If you are in favor of Article 9, simply raise your hand and keep it raised until you're accounted, please. I'm going to take care of the stage. These two are going to handle the rest of it, okay? Give them a second. All in favor, keep your hand raised. All I have is the stage. They've got the rest of the floor. If you are opposed to Article 9, that's a no, please raise your hand, keep it raised until you're accounted, please. Keep it raised. Keep it raised. Article 9 passed with 22 yes, 16 no. Article 10.
Mr. Moderator, Doug Morrison, Select Board. Article 10, I move to appropriate the sum of $55,000 to increase the FY 2019 Cable Department budget by said sum to total, in the aggregate, the sum of $128,177, and to meet said appropriation from the receipts and revenues to be collected on the behalf of the Cable Department for said fiscal year.
Okay. Second?
Diane Haley-Brooks, Select Board. I second that motion.
Thank you. Advisory Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Advisory Committee recommends in favor of this article.
Thank you. Further discussion? Article 10.
Point of order? I'd like to file a motion for reconsider of the last question.
Not in the middle of this article, you can't.
Well, I want to substantiate the fact that we want to reconsider at a later time at the end of this meeting.
Well, if, at the appropriate time, you can bring it back up, but now is not the appropriate time to reconsider that question.
Okay.
We are discussing Article 10 right now. Further discussion? Article 10. Further discussion? Article 10. All in favor of Article 10 signify by saying yes?
Yes!
Opposed? Okay. Article 11.
Mr. Moderator, Diane Haley-Brooks, Select Board. I move to appropriate the sum of $107,500 for supplemental appropriations for various capital activities as generally described below. Senior Center, $100,000. Templeton Center Fire Station, $7,500, and to meet said appropriation by a transfer of said sum from certified free cash.
Thank you. We have a second.
John Cavill, I second that.
Thank you. Advisory Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Advisory Committee recommends in favor of this article.
Thank you. Further discussion? Article 11. Further discussion? Article 11. All in favor of Article 11 signify by saying yes?
Yes!
Opposed?
No.
Article 12.
Mr. Moderator, Doug Morrison, Select Board. Article 12, I move to appropriate the sum of $37,500 for various capital appropriations as generally described below. FY 19 revaluation, $25,000. Town Common, $12,500, and to meet said appropriation by a transfer of said sum from certified free cash.
Thank you. Second?
Diane Haley-Brooks, Select Board. I second that motion.
Thank you. Advisory Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Advisory Committee recommends in favor of this article.
Thank you. Further discussion?
The town common at Beverly Bartolomeo.
Thank you.
Town Common, the $12,500, that's for removing trees? Did that go out for bid?
Can you answer that question?
Mr. Moderator, Diane Haley-Brooks.
Can you answer that question?
Yes.
Thank you.
That is for tree removal or tree to help them stay up or pruning.
So it came in at $12,500?
That is correct.
Okay.
Further discussion? Article 12. Further discussion? Article 12. All in favor of Article 12 signify by saying yes?
Yes!
Opposed? I'll be stepping down for Article 13, so there's no conflicts.
Article 13.
Madam Moderator, Diane Haley-Brooks, Select Board. I move to appropriate the sum of $52,500 for supplemental appropriations to the fiscal year 2019 operating budget as follows. Public Works, Highway, $15,000. Fire and EMS, $5,000. Police, $22,500. Selectmen, $5,000. IT, $5,000. And to meet said appropriation by a transfer of said sum from certified free cash.
Do I have a second?
Doug Morrison, Select Board. I'll second that.
Thank you. Advisory Committee?
Yes, Madam Moderator. The Advisory Committee recommends in favor of this article. We think town meeting deserves an explanation of the added cost for legal funding and the IT, that is, the 360 office deployment.
Carter Terenzini, Town Administrator. We do not carry a line item in the budget for settlement of legal claims. We had two that came up unexpectedly. The insurance carrier often covers our defense, but those were unknown at the time we're preparing the budget in February of this year. With respect to the IT, we had an initial estimate of $5,000 carried in the budget for the deployment of Office 360, and when the final proposals came in post-budget, the cost was about $97.48. Actually, the cost was exactly $97.48.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Tom Jelenowski, South Main Street. Could someone elaborate on the unanticipated legal claims, what that means or what they
We had a deductible claim with respect to the defense of a zoning matter, and we had a, trying to remember exactly what this was now, a claim with respect to the processing of some benefits that the applicant didn't feel were done in a timely manner, and it became the more practicable business decision, because that cost would have had to have been defended by us to resolve it with a claim settlement.
Steve Drury, Drury Lane. Well, I'm glad the administrator has elaborated on the fact that the zoning issue of $60,000 in part of the legal matters, because basically, the town had a court case in 2010 on the property in question, could have at any time evoked their ruling and actually fined every particular issue every single day, and I brought it up, and it came to something like $350,000. But instead, we're paying $60,000 so that you can defend yourselves in a court of law. By the way, every single time I have ever brought anything to this town where the town has the authority to act, I have to bring the case to court. I have to bring the case to court and get the case resolved myself. And I'm gonna tell you, sir, I'm going to sue you, and I will sue you. I am sick and tired...
Point of order. Point of order.
I am sick and tired of this happening. Respectfully, $60,000 is a lot of money. And I say to you...
Point of order.
What?
We're discussing Article 13, correct?
Yes.
Then that's what we should be discussing.
We are discussing it. With $60,000 that he admits that was found on a zoning situation, and I'm very aware of that case, 'cause it applies to the case that I held up here just recently, and if it does, then it's in part. The bottom line is just that, that is not itemized, okay? And there shouldn't be any itemized there, because there's already court standing on this matter, that you could have been fining these individuals and actually gaining money rather than spending money in a defense that is under your authority to act. It's under the Board of Health's authority to act, under the building inspectors' issue to act, and it's under the administrator to fund these items and to make them happen. And this goes back to 2010 even further. So we're talking years and years, and you've been giving me external obsolescence, and that has to do with the $60,000. You would rather see me file for external obsolescence every year and pay $60,000 or what, in part, to defend what you're responsible to do? You're responsible to make these acts happen. The Board of Health is supposed to go act on these properties, and you refuse to act, even in court to this minute.
Carter Terenzini, Town Administrator. I do not generally discuss litigation in public, but I can tell this body that the money's requested here. I don't know where the number 30, $60,000 is coming from, but I can tell you that $0 of this relate to Mr. Drury's litigation. There's no relation whatsoever. There are other cases that have now been settled, and I think if you were able to know the full details of those, you would feel careful, pretty comfortable, that they've been settled in a good business practice at a relatively low cost to the community.
Any further discussion on Article 13? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye!
All those opposed?
No.
Article 14.
Mr. Moderator, Diane Haley-Brooks, Select Board. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $417,911 to pay the assessment upon it by the Narragansett Regional School District for the purposes of making payments upon the district's indebtedness.
Doug Morrison, Select Board. I second that.
Second. Thank you. Advisory Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Advisory Committee recommends in favor of this article.
Thank you. Further discussion? Article 14.
Kate Fulton, Bridge Street. This has to be paid. However, the fact that it was left out of the budget last May is, I don't know who to blame, but somebody needs to take responsibility for this lapse, whether it's the school committee who holds budget hearings, whether it's the superintendent of schools, whether it's the selectmen or the administrative assistant who didn't catch this, or the advisory board, somebody needs to have their fingers slapped for this one. But vote yes.
Further discussion?
Beverly Bartolomeo. I was under the impression that we borrowed money from the band for this. Is that true?
I'm sorry, borrowed?
Yeah.
$417,000 from the band?
I was under the impression that Mr. Terenzini said we were going to borrow money from the school band to cover this, so that it could be paid. And I would assume this was paying that back.
I'm not sure that the school band has $417,000 in their account.
The band, not the band, the band. Borrowing the band?
Okay. Just, yeah, right. I wasn't the only one that heard that. Okay.
The band, yeah.
Mr. Terenzini, can somebody answer that question?
Mr. Moderator, John Cavill, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. We did not use any band money to pay the 400-plus thousands of dollars of the debt. And to Ms. Fulton, I take full responsibility for that action. That was my fault. I was focused on the $6,300-plus thousands of dollars for the school budget. I didn't even think of the indebtedness, and it went through the entire chain the way it went, and I take full responsibility for that action. It was my fault.
Did we get fined for paying late?
No, we did not. The school system, our partners here at the Narragansett Regional School District work with us. They realized the mistake that I have made, and the mistake is being fixed and corrected today.
I'm quite sure you don't make out the warrant. Somebody else.
Thank you. Further discussion? Article 14. Further discussion? Article 14. All in favor of Article 14 signify... All in favor of Article 14 signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
So that passed at 9:30. Article 15.
Mr. Moderator, Diane Haley-Brooks, Select Board, I move to amend the FY 2019 operating budget by transferring the sum of $25,000 from insurance and benefits to fire and EMS.
Doug Morrison, Select Board, I second that. Thank you. Second, Advisory Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Advisory Committee recommends against this article.
Thank you. Further discussion, Article 15. Further discussion, Article 15. Okay, I see you. Yep.
Steve Castle, TCTV Cable Department, can someone answer why that says cable committee? Is that a mistake? I just want to make sure.
We'll get you an answer. Stand by.
Mr. Moderator, Vice Chairman of the Board, Cameron Fords, I think this is just a copy and paste incident. I mean, no, this has no relationship to the cable committee whatsoever, but I think this is just a copy and paste incident coming from the previous article. So I think this is a slip. There is no relation there, too. It should be coming, submitted by the Board of Selectmen.
I believe you might have heard your answer. I'm really not sure either. Check with counsel. It's not going to be critical to the vote either way. The article title or heading or whatever is one thing, but the wording that you're actually voting on is spelled out correctly with regards to the fire and EMS. Okay. Further discussion, Article 15. Further discussion, Article 15.
Beverly Bartolomeo, I don't understand why we're giving, putting money in fire and EMS. They should have their own account, and there should be enough money in it. Want to explain that to me?
Mr. Moderator?
Can you explain that?
Vice Chairman of the Board, are you suggesting that the fire and EMS has their own accountant for their department?
When we voted to exempt fire and EMS, their money was supposed to be for them and not used for anything else. So I would assume there should have been enough money in their account.
I'm going to defer this question to the Town Administrator.
Carter Terranzini, Town Administrator, when the override was passed, there's a sum total of about $470,000. When the appropriations were made, they were made to various line items. One of the line items was fire and EMS. One of the line items was insurance and benefits. As explained in the summary, the spending plan believed that we would be able to hire fully certified, or that was the basis of the plan, fully certified paramedics upon the first of the fiscal year, and those benefits would then commence shortly after that. The fact of the matter is, we were not able to hire fully certified paramedics. And we have had to hire folks that we need to send to the fire academy. Those positions get basically paid twice. You're sending somebody to the academy, and you're backfilling their position during the course of the day. In addition, if we have to call another service, we have to pay for that. Now, although we have the added expense over on the one side, the fact that we did not get everybody hired on July 1 means that we have not been spending the insurance and benefits we thought we were going to spend on the other side. This is a simple rebalancing of the monies that were appropriated for fire and EMS, taking some from insurance and benefits that are not being needed for fire and EMS personnel benefits, and putting them into the personnel wages where they are needed. It's simply balancing out where those dollars are needed. There are no added dollars being appropriated.
Chief, I think you might have explained it for you, but were you coming down for this or no? Okay. Any further discussion? Further discussion, Article 15. All in favor of Article 15 signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
That passed at 9:36 PM. Thank you. Article 16.
Mr. Moderator, Doug Morrison, Select Board, Article 16, I move to appropriate the sum of $322,500 to make deposits into the operations and capital stabilization accounts and the OPEB reserve account as follows. OpEx, $225,000. CapEx, $65,000. And OPED, $32,500. And to meet the said appropriations by a transfer of the said sums from certified free cash.
Diane Haley-Brooks, Select Board, I second that motion.
Second, thank you. Advisory Committee.
Mr. Moderator, Advisory Committee recommends in favor of this article.
Thank you. Further discussion, Article 16. Further discussion, Article 16. All in favor of Article 16 signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That passed unanimously at 9:38 PM.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to dissolve the assembly.
Motion to dissolve the meeting? Second?
I second that. John Calvis.
All in favor of dissolving the meeting signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And, um...
Stephen, one second. Hold on one minute. Okay.
I'll be dead by the time they get that done, so don't worry about it.
Well, I might be, too.
You did a good job today, by the way.
Just being a solicitor.
How does a liar end up? He is. Guy on South Road. You know where that water cake is? He's heading down South Road. Used to be a farm there. The other side of the road claims that when you put those, oh, certainly made this land, but I think that's settlement.
Well, we didn't distinguish whether it was a settlement or fees.
Mr. Jury.
Yes.
You have a point of order. What is it?
Oh, again, I wanted to revise question nine, revisit it.
Okay. So you want to reconsider question nine?
Yeah, I'd like to bring it back to a vote again.
Okay.
Please.
All right. So here's what, I'm going to allow this to happen, okay? In the middle of a motion, excuse me, in the middle of an article, that was not the appropriate time.
I understand.
Okay. There were many times...
I apologize.
There were many times between that article and now, we had the opportunity to do so.
Well, unfortunately...
Not my job to explain to you how and when you do it.
Are you telling me that you're not going to allow?
No, I'm just simply trying to explain it to you, maybe even for the future.
Oh, that'd be great.
I'm actually doing just the opposite. I'm going to allow you to discuss Article nine.
Oh, yeah, okay, well...
Okay. We're going to have some discussion, and we're going to vote on Article nine. I'll have you keep in mind that the vote was overturned, okay? But with a hand count, it's pretty clear and cut as to what the vote is. Voices can be a little bit different, but every person in this room saw what the vote was. Okay? So I'm going to allow you this, even though it's in the middle of it, okay?
I would like...
Go ahead. Hold on. We got a point of order.
Michael Curry, Hurstston Road, we have to, if he has a motion to reconsider, we have to vote to do that, correct?
Correct. That's what we're going to do, is I'm going to allow him to have a motion to reconsider.
Mr. Moderator? A point of order.
Yeah, sure.
I'd like to call the point of order that, point of order is only be used for procedural issue, and I don't think that there was a procedural issue on the floor when I had made my motion to absolve this assembly. He called a point of order, but there was no procedural issue. He didn't make a motion to say, can we revisit this before I already made a motion? There was a second on the floor.
Right. So basically, what he was trying to do is stop that so he could make his, so he could be heard.
But there was already a motion on the floor.
Correct.
So we have to overturn that motion on the floor that was to absolve this meeting, which was a motion for and a second.
And a vote.
And...
It was not a full vote. We're not done voting. It has not been dissolved, no.
Mr. Moderator, respectfully, I don't believe you can overturn a vote on the floor to hear to a point of order that has nothing to do with procedure.
There was no decision made to be dissolved. The meeting was not dissolved, there's no decision made. I never said a time, I never said who won, yes or no. Mr. Jury, what we are going to do is we're going to ask for a vote to reconsider Article nine.
Thank you.
Okay. Have in mind, if the people here say yes, that means we can discuss Article nine further. If the people here say no, it is done.
Understood.
Okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I have one qualification for clarity. Could I have come down in between?
Hold on. Give me one second, I said. Okay. Everybody understand?
Yep.
What we are doing is we are voting to reconsider Article nine. If you'd like to discuss it further, simply say yes. And if you do not want to do it, simply say no. All in favor of reconsidering Article nine?
Yes.
Signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Article nine did not pass for reconsideration at 9:45 PM.
Mr. Moderator?
One minute. Yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I would like to make now a motion to dissolve the assembly.
Motion to dissolve. Do I have a second? Chuck Calvis, I'll second that. Okay. All in favor of dissolving the meeting signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That passed unanimously at 9:46. Thank you.